...of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
All right. Item number one.
I make a motion to approve item number one on the agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion by Commissioner Arnold, seconded by Commissioner Warren to approve item one on the agenda through the minutes of the September twenty-fifth meeting.
That's fair question.
Usually three.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, carry on. Item two.
Make a motion to recess commissioners' meeting, open salary board at still nine a.m.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, seconded by Commissioner Arnold to approve item two. To recess commissioners' meeting, open the salary board at nine a.m. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, salary board, item number one.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, seconded by Commissioner Arnold to approve the minutes of the last meeting, September twenty-fifth. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
And one exception. Item two.
Make a motion to approve. Item number two is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, seconded by Commissioner Arnold to approve item two on the agenda. Create a full-time non-union position of DPS operations manager. Fourteen forty-two per hour, at least forty hours per week, six months probation. Benefits according to county policy manual, government requirements. Further recommendations of the Director of Public Safety, nine-one-one, Bruce Butler. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So, carry on.
Make a motion to approve item number three on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Arnold, seconded by Commissioner Warren to approve item three on the agenda. Create a full-time position of Assistant Public Defender. Salary of sixty-two thousand, minimum forty hours per week, six months probation period. Benefits according to county policy manual, government regulations effective November fourth. Further recommendation of Public Defender Linda LaBarbera. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So, carry on. Item number four.
Make a motion to approve. Item number four is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, seconded by Commissioner Arnold to approve item four on the agenda. To create a union, a non-union hourly position of First Deputy Registered Recorder at thirteen forty-six per hour. Fourteen forty hours per week, effective October ninth, twenty nineteen, with a six-month probation period. And benefits according to the county policy manual. Further recommendation of Shell Esprich Register Will. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number five.
Make a motion to approve. Item number five is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, seconded by Commissioner Arnold to approve item five on the agenda. Eliminate the non-union salary position of First Deputy Registered Recorder, effective end of business day, October tenth, twenty nineteen. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Scoop, you're here.
I'm here.
I didn't see you sneak in there. You should have announced, man.
Sorry.
Hey. Item number six.
I make a motion to approve item number six on the agenda. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Arnold, seconded by Commissioner Warren to approve item six on the agenda. Eliminate the part-time position of Assistant Public Defender, effective November fourth, twenty nineteen. Further recommendation of Public Defender Linda LaBarbera. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So, carry on. Item number seven.
I'll make the motion to eliminate the two open temporary part-time D.O.L. permit positions.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Treasurer Miller, seconded by Commissioner Arnold to approve item seven. To eliminate two open temporary part-time D.O.L. permit positions, per the recommendation of Treasurer Jason Miller. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number eight.
I'll also make the motion to eliminate the open full-time position of Second Deputy Director of Tax Claim.
Second.
Motion by Treasurer Miller, seconded by Commissioner Warren to approve item eight. To eliminate the open full-time position of Second Deputy of Tax Claim, per the recommendation of Treasurer Jason Miller. Questions or comments? I just want to make comment here. Treasurer, on behalf of the public, thank you. You've been very financially stringent in your department and have improved services while eliminating costs. And you do more with less, so thank you for your efforts. It's greatly appreciated. All in favor?
Aye.
Item number nine.
I'll make a motion to approve. Item number nine is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, seconded by Commissioner Arnold to approve item nine on the agenda. Eliminate three open full-time telecommunicator positions from nine-one-one, per the recommendation of the nine-one-one Public Safety Coordinator, Bruce Butler. Questions or comments? Just so you know, there's fifteen total positions plus five part-time. We only need twelve full-time positions. Of course, we only have like five full-time people, so as soon as we can get the rest of them hired, we'll be good. All in favor?
Aye.
Item number ten.
Is there a public comment?
Oh, public comment on salary board. Anybody got anything to say about salary board? Here and then, item ten.
Now I'll make a motion to close salary board and return to commissioners' meeting.
You missed. Well, we created the position. Now we're in the next part.
We're halfway there.
Just hang on for a couple minutes.
Okay, we're halfway there.
Okay, I got a motion. Do you want to get a second?
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, seconded by Commissioner Arnold to close the salary board and return to commissioners' meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Treasurer Miller, you're welcome to stay if you'd like. I'm sure you have things to do. If you wanted to go do that, you can do that, too.
Will do.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve. Item number three is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, seconded by Commissioner Arnold to approve item three on the agenda. Ratify and approve the following cash disbursements and electronic payments. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So, carry on. Item four.
Make a motion to approve. Item number four is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, seconded by Commissioner Arnold to approve item four on the agenda. Ratify and approve the following semi-requests or payments for them, as so stated. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So, carry on. Item five.
Make a motion to approve. Item number five is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, seconded by Commissioner Arnold to approve item five on the agenda. To approve the transfer of Jason Beresley from the position of part-time Assistant Public Defender to the position of full-time Assistant Public Defender, salary sixty-two thousand per year, effective November fourth, twenty nineteen, with six-month probation period. And benefits according to county policy manual, per the recommendations of Linda LaBarbera, Public Defender. Questions or comments?
I'd just like to thank the commissioners so far for supporting my office. I really do appreciate it.
Thanks for doing the job you do for us.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
There you go. You're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number six.
I'll make a motion to approve. Item number six is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, seconded by Commissioner Arnold to approve item six on the agenda. Ratify and approve termination of Sabrina Brooks from part-time position of Corrections Officer, effective September thirtieth, per the recommendation of Warden Shelton. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So, carry on. Item number seven.
Make a motion to approve. Item number seven is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, seconded by Commissioner Arnold to approve item seven on the agenda. Ratify and approve the hiring of Jaden McNelly of Lacyville, the open union eligible position, part-time Corrections Officer, per the recommendation of Warden Shelton. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item made.
Make a motion to approve. Item number eight is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Warren, seconded by Commissioner Arnold to approve item eight on the agenda. Approve the hiring of Julian McGwin of Nicholson to the open part-time union position of Corrections Officer, per the recommendation of Warden Shelton. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So, carry on. Item nine.
Make a motion to approve. Item number nine is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, seconded by Commissioner Arnold to approve item nine on the agenda. Approve the hiring of Matthew Torres of Binghamton, New York, to the open part-time union position of Corrections Officer, per the recommendation of Warden Mark Shelton. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So, carry on. Item ten.
Make a motion to approve. Item number ten is listed on the agenda.
Second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, seconded by Commissioner Arnold to approve item ten on the agenda. To approve the hiring of Rachel Way of Matros, the open full-time union position of case aide, at ten twenty-five per hour, effective October tenth, twenty nineteen, per the recommendation of Children's Services Director, Michelle Graziano. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So, carry on. Item eleven.
I'll make a motion to approve. Item number eleven is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, seconded by Commissioner Arnold to approve item eleven on the agenda. To accept the hiring of Richard.
Keog.
Shouldn't be accept or acknowledge.
To acknowledge.
Should be to acknowledge.
Sorry, yes. I agree.
Oh, second that with the change made.
Thank you.
To the motion.
Okay, so item eleven, motion by Commissioner Warren, seconded by Commissioner Arnold to motion to acknowledge the hiring of Richard Keog of Susquehanna, or Kingsley, I'm sorry, to the open union position of Second Deputy Recorder of Deeds, Register Wills, per the recommendation of Michelle Esprich Register Wills, Recorder of Deeds. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number twelve.
Make a motion to approve. Item, no, with the, let me see. Make a motion to approve. Item number twelve is listed on the agenda and change accept to acknowledge.
You want to acknowledge or approve?
Acknowledge. We don't get to approve it. We only acknowledge it.
Acknowledge it. Oh, okay, got it, because it's elective official. Okay. I will second that with the change made to the word acknowledge.
Yeah. Item number twelve, motion by Commissioner Warren, seconded by Commissioner Arnold to approve, to accept, or yeah, to acknowledge the transfer of Luanne Miles from salary non-union position of First Deputy Registered Recorder to the hourly non-union position of First Deputy Registered Recorder at thirteen forty-six an hour, forty hours per week. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item thirteen.
Make a motion to approve. Item number thirteen is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Warren, seconded by Commissioner Arnold to approve item thirteen, accept with regret the resignation of James Chirco from full-time position of Corrections Officer, per the recommendation of Warden Shelton. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item fourteen.
Make a motion to approve. Item number fourteen is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, seconded by Commissioner Arnold to accept with regret the resignation of Dominic Brady from the full-time position of Corrections Officer, per the recommendation of Warden Mark Shelton. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item fifteen.
I'll make a motion to approve. Item number fifteen on the agenda.
Was this reviewed?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Arnold, seconded by Commissioner Warren to approve item fifteen on the agenda. Approve the contract with Amstoria Consulting for professional consulting services in January first, twenty twenty, through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, with fixed fee of sixteen thousand four hundred eighty dollars per year. Further recommendation of our Director of Public Safety, nine-one-one Coordinator, Bruce Butler. Questions or comments? Yes.
What exactly do they do?
They, well, they do a lot of different things. They help with grants. They also help with a lot of the programs we have to put together, like the let me think of the names of a few over here now.
Is that like some, so the, like, the emergency management coordinator training?
Yeah. That and the action recovery plans and disaster recovery plans and hazard mitigation plan, plus helps with grants and anything technical with nine-one-one. It's quite a bit. And the state's all covered out of nine-one-one grant money.
Okay.
When we had the flooding, they were on site with us here.
Right.
Last year.
Should that be reflected in the motion? That the, the fee is covered by nine-one-one grant money?
Well, it all comes on nine-one-one money. Nine-one-one is funded mostly out of nine-one-one grants now. And actually, we just got notice the other day. I believe we, we just got another new grant for nine-one-one for half a million dollars. That's why the position of the operations person was put in place because we are finding more and more grant money, which is great for our county and our people. If we get more grant money, then that keeps our taxes at base, so we don't have to increase taxes. All in favor?
Aye.
Item sixteen.
I'll make a motion to approve. Item sixteen on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Arnold, seconded by Commissioner Warren to approve item sixteen, enter into an agreement with Motor World Solutions Incorporated for the Phase Two simulcast Susquehanna County Police Repeater Contract for Equipment and Integration in the amount of one hundred and fifteen thousand, per the recommendation of Bruce Butler, Director of Public Safety. Questions or comments? Yes.
Does this do anything to approve the, the communications with responders?
Yes, it does a lot to improve the communication. So, that's part of the, the whole thing, is the simulcast getting Phase One, Phase Two. I think we just looked at something this morning, which is the next step on equipment and stuff to continue to improve the, the ability for communications between the first responders and nine-one-one.
And I assume that this equipment can be transferable to the new?
Yes, it's all set up to be transferable to the new location. All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we have a couple of proclamations that we need to have.
I'll make a motion to approve proclamation two zero one nine dash two zero. Susquehanna County as a Purple Heart County.
I'll second that motion.
So, a motion by Commissioner Warren, seconded by Commissioner Arnold to approve proclamation number twenty nineteen dash twenty, Susquehanna County as a Purple Heart County. Susquehanna County does not have that designation right now. With the work from our Veterans Affairs Office, we're trying to get that designation for our county, for our military. So, hopefully, we'll get this submitted and we can get that recognition back in the county. So, with that being said, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, carries.
Make a motion to approve proclamation two zero one nine dash two three, designating October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Susquehanna County.
I'll second that motion.
A motion by Commissioner Warren, seconded by Commissioner Arnold to approve proclamation twenty nineteen dash twenty-three, Susquehanna County Domestic Violence Awareness Month for October. Any questions or comments, ladies? I'm sure that's why you're here.
Indeed. So, my name is Tiffany Benedict, and I'm the Program Manager for the Women's Resource Center in Susquehanna County. As you can see, October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We're going to be placing a sign in the community, but what we have already done is placed two hundred and ninety-six purple ribbons up and down the avenue, hopefully you've noticed, to represent the survivors that we've served in the last year who have been experiencing domestic violence. Along with that, we have a couple of events planned. The third Friday this October is the eighteenth, and we partnered with TreeHab's Community Resource Center to use their space to do a pumpkin painting. There are like miniature pumpkins over there, where people can come in and paint the pumpkins with messages of hope or images of inspiration. And then the following day, on Saturday, at Saint Marks in New Milford as part of their meal that they hold monthly. We'll have our display of Empty Place at the Table. And Empty Place at the Table is a art exhibit that consists of the real place settings of women and children who have died due to domestic violence in both Lackawanna and Susquehanna County. So, while it is a very sobering list for us to consider, I feel like this is a very impactful way to kind of raise awareness in our community about the lives and the families that have been impacted by domestic violence. So, thank you so much for giving us time to speak today.
Thank you. Thank you for the work that you do.
Yes, thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're now at public comment. We do have two announcements I want to make. We have flyers here. On Friday, October twenty-fifth, nine to four. And Saturday, October twenty-sixth, nine to noon, at our recycling center on Ellsworth Drive, we will be doing a electronics recycling. But it's a little bit more. It's cell phones, answering machines, floor copiers, desk CPUs, fax machines, keyboards, laptops, televisions. They have to be whole. They can't be busted up. Microwaves, modems, printers, radios, stereos, telephones, air conditioners, dehumidifiers, freezers, refrigerators, stoves, dishwashers, water heaters, washers, dryers, toner cartridges, freon bearing appliances and metal items. We will not accept, and again, I say again, we will not accept household batteries, light bulbs, CDs, DVDs, VHS, or cassette tapes. So, this is available to our residents of Susquehanna County. You will need to have a ID with you to prove that you live in Susquehanna County. We will take a reasonable amount from any household. This is not open to businesses. This is for residents only. Also, we hope to have a good turnout. We're planning on filling two tractor trailer loads of, of all this stuff into two tractor trailer loads. So, again, this is October twenty-fifth and October twenty-sixth. It's at no cost. We're not charging. Most places, when they do the recycling events, they charge. We are not charging. We are doing this to help do our part to help clean up the county so that people aren't throwing these items over the bank and into the ditches and everything else. So, the county will bear the cost of this. So, that's the first one. The second one is October twenty-fourth at the Matros Area High School in the auditorium at six to eight p.m. There will be a meeting with, the commissioners are hosting for PennDOT and our legislators to discuss roads and what's going on with them. So, it's been a long time coming, getting this meeting and trying to put this together, but we finally have one. So, I urge everybody that has some issues or concerns or just wants to receive information, to come to this meeting on the twenty-fourth, between six and eight p.m. PennDOT will be there, first of all, to inform as to, you know, what is going on and, and, you know, the funding stream, how they get their money and how it's distributed, the kind of repairs they've made this year. The repairs they're going to be looking at over the next few years and what their plans are as to address the road issues in this county. So, it's an important meeting. I hope everybody that's been voicing their opinions all over Facebook takes time out of their schedule to come to this. And we made sure it was a night meeting, so, you know, we didn't want anybody to say that, you know, we do everything during the day, even though we do do a lot of night meetings. And, you know, I, I just want to bring that up, too. One of the most important night meetings we had was last November, was it? I think it was, or actually, November or December, was advertised as a night commissioners' meeting. It's one of the ones required by law to be at night. And it's probably the most important. It's the meeting that sets the salary for all the elected officials. And so, we had that meeting at night, and unfortunately, no one from the public came to that night meeting. So, it was advertised and everything else, and I know it's unbelievable that nobody would show up.
Stacy was here.
Stacy was here, well, you're not the public. You're the reporter.
Just the public at large.
There you go. But we do have other events. You know, we had our Resource Day on the weekend at Mountain View. We also publicized that the commissioners were there to have conversations with. And again, the turnout was atrocious. We didn't get as many people as you would think would come there with all the, with all the comments that people are making about what's going on. You'd think people would show up to these meetings. And when we have them on the weekends or at night, we've had several meetings at night for different programs that the commissioners are at. And again, the turnout's been very poor, if any. So, but we will continue. And, you know, we will continue to try and do public meetings here and there where we can. We all try to do outreach. I know that Commissioner Arnold's all over the county doing things. I know Commissioner Warren has outreach hours in different places. And again, also takes us somebody to call and say, hey, can you have a meeting in my area? Would be more than glad to come down if they can find a location, be more than glad to come down and hold a public meeting at night and talk to people, too. So, with that said, is there any other public comment? Bill? Got to be thinking of something.
Well, I'm glad you're having the electronic recycling. I was talking to Jen Friday yesterday, and she had nothing but praise for the three for getting this going.
Yeah, I think the next thing, you know, once we get this done, you know, the next big one that people are talking about is tires, of course. You know, so we'll, we'll be looking into that to see what we can do. We're also looking, we know that a lot of people that have recycling bins, the bins are pretty beat up and shot, so we're looking at possibly getting some new bins that we can push out in the county for the residents to have new recycling bins. I mean, if everybody recycled, it'd be a lot better. But, you know, if you drive around the county and look for recycling bins, they're, they're few and far between people. A lot of people don't recycle. So, we'd like to try and keep all this stuff out of the landfills and out of the ocean and everything else. And so, if we can get people to recycle, you know, that will, that'll leave a better place for our children and grandchildren. So, we will look at the tires next to see what we can do with that. You know, this e-recycling is but a struggle. There's not a lot of places that take this stuff and recycle it anymore. Actually, all this stuff will be going out to Putz Town, is where we're actually going to end up having to go. So, but it is a struggle trying to find, you know, places to do that. So, as far as other activity going on, if you haven't been down through by Halsted and Great Bend area, Matthew's Cadillac is apparently going in where the old Mag Lab used to be. And if you're old enough, you know what Mag Lab was, but if not, it'd be the old EnviroCycle if you're young enough to only know that. But they've ripped down half the buildings and they're putting a dealership in there. So, you know, that's pretty exciting. They'll, they'll end up employing fifty, sixty people probably by the time they're done. And we have a new doctor's office that opened up in Halsted and the plaza there. So, so that's pretty nice. The unfortunate news is we did find out that NEPA is closing their facility in Susquehanna, which is not good news. That's sad news. An area that needs, needs services like they do. It's unfortunate that that facility's closing and moving out of there. I realize NEPA is looking at it for their bottom line as to consolidations and cutting costs and, and things like that, but unfortunately, the people in that area will suffer now. They do say it's only five miles on the road if you have transportation. And we do have county-wide transportation at this point. But with what's going on in Harrisburg with medical transportation, you know, that's going to be kind of questionable, too. There's a push in Harrisburg right now, and actually, legislation was already passed and the, and it was done in the budget cycle last year to move away from the model of having our local TreeHab who, who partners with us to do the dispatching and, and the ride share for people with medical assistance. They're looking to go to call centers and establish one call center for like the whole northeast or whole northern or whole eastern side of, of Pennsylvania. There's only, I think there's two, there's two areas right now that use call centers. Philadelphia is one of them. So, I would imagine this is getting pushed on us because legislators in Philadelphia are partnering with their, or, or trying to pay back some favors or whatever for the people in, that have these call centers. So, if they go to a call center, most likely it'll end up being Philadelphia. I was at a meeting last week on this from the people that sit on the, commissioners that sit on the Transportation Authority and, and some of the agencies. And there is nobody from rural Pennsylvania that's in favor of this. It's just the big cities and the counties that didn't want to bother with transportation. The counties that don't want to handle transportation anymore, they think it's a great idea because they don't have to do anything. But all the other counties, which is all the rural counties in Pennsylvania, they're totally against this model. They want to leave it like it is. Our concern is, first of all, will a person in Philadelphia or wherever the person is that's at the call center, speak English, good enough to talk to the people here. Secondly, we know that they will not know the people up here. They don't realize that, you know, yeah, it may only be five miles to go from here to the New York State border. It doesn't take five minutes. It could take anywhere from a half hour to forty-five minutes. They don't realize how long it takes to get to Scranton, to the medical centers down there, especially with the construction and stuff. So, we have a lot of concern with that. They don't know the, the people. They don't know the runs. They don't know our topography. They don't know what happens here in the wintertime because because nobody in Harrisburg knows what happens here in the wintertime. We have a lot of concern that, um, you know, the people that, that are riding these buses going to get their dialysis and other medical stuff, they're used to talking to the people here. They know the people here. So, now it's going to be a foreign person or, and not of nationality, but a person that they don't know that's talking to them. Um, and these people don't know that, well, maybe they need to stop someplace else too or get something else. You know, all the people locally know that. So, all those services are going to be lost. This model was done in Texas and it was a total disaster in Texas. It ended up costing the state a lot more money, like $120, $150 million more in the state of Texas to do this, as well as it decreased the amount of participation in ridership because the people just got frustrated with it and said, forget it, I'm not going. Our concern, of course, is, you know, when you have people that are on dialysis and things like that, they don't go to dialysis, they're going to die. So, you know, we don't need people put in harm's way because, uh, somebody had an idea in Philadelphia or Harrisburg that said, hey, you know, let's take care of another organization or another company like they did with Maximus with the assessment with, with our area agency on aging. And, uh, and it turned out to be a disaster. And Maximus ended up costing the state a ton of money more to do the assessments on the elderly and people in need than having our local area agency on aging. So, none of it's good news. It's all bad news, especially when you deal with Harrisburg and, and the nonsense down there. So, we are working on now trying to get a list of all the legislators that are in favor of turning the apple cart upside down. And we will get it published. And we will also do background checks on them to see if any of them are getting any funding from any of these call centers or anything else. So, so that's kind of what's going on with that. So, now that I've done my rant, I'm sorry.
This sounds as good as the Wheels on Wheels change.
Yeah. 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 And we're still, we're still working through that. I know Mary Ann was at a meeting last week and, um, we're trying to get more information. And, uh, you know, there's a lot of red tape to go through to make this change. It's not of just saying, well, we want to do it and then we get to do it. This is, you know, the, the policy that's in place, procedure, it's at least 240 days to try and pull this back into this county. And, but we're not giving up. We're going to keep pushing forward. We think it's important to have people go into our homes five days a week if needed to, to see these people. Whether they have a meal with them or not is irrelevant. You know, may as well have a meal with you if you're going in. And, uh, but the wellness check is the most important thing, especially in our area where we have so much bad weather, especially in the wintertime, and people lose power and, and stuff like that. And, you know, and if an elderly person is having a struggle in the wintertime and, you know, it allows that if a person walks in their house every day during the week and they find out they've got no heat because they've run out of heat because they couldn't afford to buy fuel, at least we can get some notification. We can get that person some help. And it's all about good neighbors being good neighbors. So...
Just something you said about, uh, my father, a few years back, in the old Montrose Hospital was in there and then got transferred to Lord's. And he said, they treat me good up here, but I'd rather be in Montrose. It's the, the connection thing.
Right.
And I think that's a big thing, especially for elderly.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, we're, you know, we're 44,000 in this county, but we're a proud 44,000. We know most of our neighbors and, and people look out for each other. And, uh, you know, and when you talk to people all the time, you know who people are. And when you start talking to people someplace else that, you know, and our big concern was with, especially with medical assistance transportation is, you know, they haven't determined how they're going to get funded. I mean, they're getting funded, of course, through the state and Fed. But, you know, the, the issue we're concerned about is, do you get funded based on what the numbers say you should have for ridership or what you actually have for ridership? Because if it's based on what you should have, then there's no, no push for you to try and get people to ride. If you're going to get the money whether they ride or not, it doesn't do us any good. So, we've got to try and make sure that they only get paid if they have the people riding. Because if it goes the other way, there's going to be, you know, it's just big business. And these are, you know, these are people that are out to make money. So... Anybody, anything else?